My name's Joan Woodard and I'm the hearing examiner this evening. The purpose of this hearing is to allow me to receive evidence and testimony on the matters that are pending.
Evidently not, I'll start over. My name is Joan Woodard and I'm the hearing examiner this evening. The purpose of this hearing is to allow me to receive evidence and testimony on the matters that are pending. I make a recommendation only to the county commissioners. I do not make the final decision. I will be submitting my recommendation to staff within two weeks of this evening's hearing. The application will then be scheduled for deliberations before the county commissioners. If you wish to give testimony, I need you to fill out one of the sheets in the back. And when you come to the podium, please remember to give your name and address for the record before you begin your testimony. First, staff will introduce the application, then we will hear from the applicant. After the applicant's testimony, we will then get into the public comment sheets. We will hear from those who are in favor, those who are neutral, and then those who are opposed. And then we'll hear from those who are on Zoom. The public not speaking will be read into the record. We will then give the applicant and/or the representative an opportunity for rebuttal of any testimony stated into the record from the public before we close the public hearing. After that point, we will receive no more testimony. The time limits are 30 minutes for the applicant's presentation, five minutes for public testimony, and 15 minutes for applicant rebuttal. I would ask that you direct all of your testimony to me and not to the audience. Are there any questions regarding this evening's proceedings? If not, then we will call the meeting to order and we will hear case number CUP 22-0013.
Good evening for the record, Vlad Finkel with Cootney County Community Development. I'll introduce the request and then let the applicant speak in greater detail about their proposal. As you stated, this is a request for a mini-storage or actually a warehouse facility by Blackrock Marina. The subject property consists of approximately 10 acres and it's located on the south end of Cootney County, heading towards Worley, Idaho. The property does a but, State Highway 95 to the northwest, and it is just south of Rockford Bay Road. The property, as you can see based on the Google aerial overlay map, it's fairly flat. There is some limited sparse vegetation on the south end of the property, but there's very limited slope on site. The current zoning designation is rural and the comp plan designation is country. The applicant is proposing a warehouse facility that will consist of three storage buildings, each one will be approximately 12,000 square feet, just shy of that 11,900 square feet. There will be no office or restroom facilities on site. The intent of this warehouse facility is to be utilized for the purpose of and by the Blackrock Marina employees for their clientele. In speaking with the applicant, when the application was originally submitted, it wasn't clear whether it would be limited in scope. And through discussion with the applicant, they did specify that this will not be open to general public. There will not be, while staff did propose specific hours of operations to limit or have a better understanding of traffic impacts, general public will not be allowed on site. The uniqueness of this project and the lot or the parcel itself is that it was platted as part of an old subdivision. And at the time when it was platted, the improvements associated with the shared infrastructure, including the interior roads, were not constructed. Recently, the, I believe, the developer or the individual that owned this plat submitted a side disturbance permit for the construction of the interior road, which is Boland Street, as well as Grissom Avenue. The two interior roads connected at this point and then connect ultimately with Rockford Bay Road, which is a public road maintained by the Worley Highway District. And approximately 700 feet to the west of that is State Highway 95, which is under the jurisdiction of Idaho Transportation Department. The road was recently constructed. I visited the site and I posted it, I'm sure you have done as well. It was recently constructed and I believe there is an approval from Fire Department as well as Worley Highway District. However, the side disturbance permit has not been finalized at this time because there are some outstanding stormwater features that need to be addressed and due to weather conditions, that has not been taken care of this time. However, physical and legal access is there for the subject property. We currently have a request in our office for a relocation of the access easement to the subject property within an area where Boland Street was constructed, but it's a separate matter and it's going through the review and will be approved shortly. So there's nothing at this point that stands in the way of gaining physical and legal access to the subject site. And these are some of the photos that I took myself when I visited the property. These are some of the photos that the applicant had submitted as part of the record. As you can see, there's very sparse vegetation. A majority of it is just very limited of minor slopes with rolling pasture land. Through the agency comment period, we received comments from Worley Highway District, which recommended approval. Worley Fire District that stated that the improvements on site, including access road and driveways, need to meet access with standards for fire apparatus. Community Development did have comments with respect to future building permits. Health Department had no issue with the proposal because there's no gray water or sewage services proposed on site. And Cootney County Sheriff approves of the request as well. During the public comment period, we received a total of three comments, one neutral and two in opposition with concerns regarding the traffic that will be generated from the proposed use, hours of operation, future maintenance of Boland Street, outdoor lighting, landscaping, fencing, and incompatibility with the surrounding area. I must say that when it comes to reviewing compatibility or addressing compatibility analysis, it's always a difficult decision or a difficult assessment for staff to make because it's a discretionary measure. In this case, because of the property being surrounded by primarily open vacant land with only one residence to the southwest of the subject site, we felt that it was important to address some compatibility concerns with appropriate screening and buffering that we included as part of our staff report for your review. We, as you may know, and I'd like the public to know, that Article 4.6 of the Land Use and Development Code does have some requirements for landscaping, screening, and buffering for parcels that are located within the commercial, light industrial, or industrial zones. They don't necessarily, or they do not, they're not mandatory for sites that are rural, residential, or agricultural. However, in cases where a more intense use other than a residential use is being proposed in the rural zone, staff may apply some of those requirements as it relates to screening and buffering. We felt that the concerns raised by the public were valid. In fact, I believe there are at least a couple building permits for a few, some of the residences within those lots, within the subdivision on some of those vacant lots. And we felt it was important to provide some screening to those adjoining residential parcels in the area. We did propose that the applicant comply with Article 4.6 of the Land Use Development Code for screening along public rights of ways, as well as along residential parcels of land. With respect to Boland Street being a private road and the maintenance of it, unfortunately, staff cannot require or recommend imposition of a maintenance agreement on a private road. In most cases, if it's a private road, there is an established HOA or a maintenance agreement that would be in place to address future improvements to Boland Street or upkeep of it. I don't know if there is any at this point, if there is an agreement or if there's an HOA that's been established. I did receive call, at least two phone calls from concerned individuals with respect to Boland Street and upkeep of it, as well as compatibility concerns. With regards to hours of operation, while the applicant didn't have hours of operation initially in their request, in discussion with the applicants represented, we concluded that the hours of operation included in the staff report were feasible and amenable to the applicant. I believe it's from 6:00 to 10:00, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And the purpose of hours of operation, even though it's not open to the public but solely to the Blackrock Marina employees, is to establish reasonable expectation for traffic impacts, especially with lights shining at nighttime. With respect to other commercial uses and compatibility concerns that were brought up, as you may know, there is Cootney County Fighting Creek landfill that's directly to the northwest of the subject property across Highway 95. It's been established there for decades. There is an existing restricted surface mine south of the subject property along Highway 95. And there are at least three or four parcels that are zoned commercial in this area. There's an old, or there's a gas station that I believe has been closed down for some time. But there are a number of commercial uses in the area. I don't have any other information to add at this time unless you have any questions for me.
Boland Road, where it currently terminates, it's planned to continue on, or is that it?
That's the terminating point, as far as I know. That's a good question that you raised. Typically, when we process subdivision requests, there is a provision for continuity or for connection to adjacent parcels of land. Because this is not a plating process, this is strictly a conditional use permit for the review and assessment of land use, we don't have the authority to impose any land dedication or easement conveniences for access or utilities. This is strictly for the use of the site. One more point that I'd like to make, right before the hearing, the applicant's representative contacted our office with regard to a couple of modifications that they are requesting to be reviewed and noted as part of the record. With respect to condition 8.06 as it relates to landscaping and buffering around the facility, as well as condition of approval 8.9 that addresses the threshold of when development permit should be approved. With respect to the landscaping changes that the applicant is proposing, they are fine with including landscaping on the north end, east end, and south end of the property. They are requesting for a waiver on landscaping along the west property line. Because the parcel to the west of the subject property is owned by Cootney Electric, they have the intent to construct a substation. Therefore, there will not be a residential use on the adjoining parcel to the west. I'll let the applicant elaborate on that one in greater detail. With respect to our condition of approval 809, staff originally had a threshold to issue building permits or any development permits, including side disturbance permit, at the time that the side disturbance permit for Boland Street has been finalized. We believe that the proposal by the applicant, which they will explain in greater detail, to have a certificate of occupancy for those three structures to be issued only after the side disturbance permit for Boland Street has been finalized, is okay as well. It's acceptable to staff because they can be constructing those buildings while the road is being finalized. We don't find that to be problematic. They just can't utilize those structures for storage purposes until the side disturbance permit has been finalized by our department. And I'll let the applicant elaborate on that in greater detail. Any additional questions for me?
Not right now. Thank you, Vlad. Are we hearing from Rand as the applicant?
Good evening, Madam Hearing Examiner. Rand Wickman for the record. And first things first, shout out to staff for assisting and solving my emergency before the meeting here. David, can we get that up on the screen or how does that work?
It's on my computer, on Zoom.
He's the one who put it in on the screen, so he can't.
Oh.
Well, even though I'm sharing it on Zoom?
Even though I'm sharing it on Zoom?
Yes, he does. He's the one who put it in there.
Oh, well, we'll just plug in that. Yeah. So, we almost had it solved before the meeting. So, yes, so again, I apologize for that. I'm not sure exactly what happened. And a shout out to my wife for getting it sent back in here on an emergency basis.
That should do it.
There we go. Thank you. Thanks again, staff. Thanks to staff for all of their assistance through this process. Oh, I guess I'm running the show here, aren't I?
Yeah. And you can scroll just by rolling that.
Yep, there we go. Okay. So, your scroll ball, your scroll wheel is more sensitive than what I'm used to. Vlad covered the location, so yeah, we're, as you can see, we're just south of, it's outlined in blue here, just south of Rockford Bay, across from the Fighting Creek landfill. Just to reiterate the proposal, this is, we plan to use this site for boat storage. That requires a CUP for a rental warehouse. We are proposing to do three buildings, each of them 70 by 170. We will have outdoor storage between the buildings, and so we've got two outdoor storage areas. The reason we have them between the buildings is to also help screening of that, is to make those outside boats, make them as least visible as possible. We'll have a full perimeter fence, as is required by the code, so that'll be a six-foot perimeter security fence with a gate. And we will maintain and enhance the tree buffer around the use, and we'll talk a little bit more about what we think that should look like. Vlad showed you the site plan, and so that pretty well covers it. You can see our three buildings, the outdoor boat storage in between, the perimeter fence that goes around the outside. When this gets developed in light of the comments and concerns, what happens is this whole kind of, this whole development area gets slid a little bit north and a little bit west, so we can be a little further away from this northeast property line, so we can put our buffer there. We also have, this is the view from Boland Road at the turnaround. We've got a pretty good wall of trees here, and we want to preserve that. And so by pushing the development further to the northwest, it also pushes it down the hill a little bit and allows us to preserve this. You can see the property line. Here's a property stake here and here, so the property line kind of heads out diagonally to the right here is where that property is. So, again, I would expect the buildings to live out here somewhere in the middle of the picture, but if we push them in there a little further, we can preserve this pretty good tree barrier, pretty good visual barrier there. And it also, again, lowers the elevation and makes them a little less visible. This is, as you get to the other side of that barrier of trees, this is looking more or less north. You can see the landfill to the left here, the highway is out here, and that, you know, Boland Road and the access is out to our right on this photo, just to give you. But you can also see that you've got a gentle slope that, you know, down toward the highway and away from Boland Road. So, some operational considerations. This use will not be open to the public, as Vlad indicated. Boats are placed into storage by BRM staff, Blackrock Marina, excuse me. We will not have recreational vehicle parking on this site. The site activity occurs mostly in the spring and the fall. Basically, they are storing people's boats either in the buildings here at this site or in a slip down at the marina. And so, you know, there's not a lot of back and forth. Customers aren't coming and getting their boats out of there, you know. Boats don't live on a trailer during the season that they're being used. They live down in a boat slip at Blackrock Marina. And so, we won't have maintenance on site, there's no fueling on the site, there's no office on the site. We will have remote security monitoring, and we're not opposed to the hours of operation that were proposed in the staff report. So those are kind of the operational parameters. With regard to surrounding uses, clearly the Fighting Creek landfill is the dominant use in the neighborhood. It occupies nearly 500 acres. It is 1.4 miles of road frontage along Highway 95, believe it or not, the ownership there associated with that. We've got the former Fighting Creek Smoke Shop, Gas Station, Convenience Store that's currently out of business. Would not surprise me to see that be pressed into some service again someday, but it currently looks like a defunct gas station, you know, from appearance standpoint. We've got a relatively new business down here, went through the county's special notice permit process not too long ago for a firearms accessory building, accessory business, sorry. It's a large building, large gray building down there. They, I don't know if they assemble them or if they're just, if it's a storage warehouse, but they've got offices and stuff in there for that business. Next to that, we've got Peak Materials, which is the rock pit that's been there for a long time, 75 acres that space occupies. And then right next to our site, we've got the Cootney Electric Future Substation. Interestingly, there are, on this map, which is two miles of frontage, there are only four residential structures within a quarter mile of the highway. You've got one here, you've got our closest neighbor, 800 feet to our southwest here, and then you've got a couple residential uses down here, actually in the commercial zone. So, you know, the highway frontage is decidedly not residential if you look at the uses that exist in the area. And that just kind of reiterates what I just said. Let's talk about access to the property. We would have much preferred access directly off of Highway 95. We were unable to secure that from ITD. They have a very firm policy that if you have the possibility for access any other place, that's where you're going to get it. We also proposed, or we also pursued getting access through, I went too far, access through the KEC parcel. They have, they have access off of the highway directly across from the entrance to the Fighting Creek landfill. And we pursued the idea of getting an easement through Cootney Electric and using that same approach. That was also a nonstarter with ITD. And so that left us with, that left us with Boland Street. And so, as our only option. So that's where we are. We will certainly participate in road maintenance as one of the 11 lots that are served by Boland Street. But we should talk a little bit about the trip generation associated with this use. The trip generation manual that's used for trip generation letters doesn't really have a category for boat storage. They do for rental warehouses, but you know, the assumption is that a rental warehouse, you know, access to that is by the public and it's year-round access. People are coming and going all year round. And so if we try and apply it more specifically to this use, we reckon we will store about 160 boats if we are really good at parking them and fitting them in on this site. I think that's probably on the high side, but we'll be conservative. So 160 boats. And so what that means is you have, you know, for each boat, you'll have two trips in the fall. Now, bringing a boat in is two trips because it's one trip in and then leaving the boat and then the guy leaving with his truck. So that's considered two trips. It's one boat delivery, but it's two trips. And so we'll have two trips in the fall and two trips in the spring to deliver and remove that boat from the boat storage. So with 160 boats, that equates to 640 trips per year for that. We figured we needed to add some additional trips to that because maintenance staff or Blackrock Marina staff is going to pay a visit to the site, let's call it twice a week. And so that's four trips, if he's visiting twice a week, that's four trips. So that times 52 is 208 trips. So altogether, that's about 848 vehicle trips per year. So if we compare that to a single-family residence, which if we were doing that, we wouldn't have the pleasure of being here tonight, we'd just be getting a building permit. But a residence, according to our highway districts, generates nine and a half trips per day. And so that equates to 3,467 vehicle trips per year. Our use generates 848 vehicle trips per year, which is 25% of the trips per year of a single-family residence. Granted, ours mostly occur in those couple, three-week periods in the fall and in the spring, but even then, it is, it is not a, it's not an unusual burden. The highway district didn't have any concerns for the amount of peak trips or anything like that with regard to the approaches. like that with regard to the approaches. Again, it's a much smaller impact than a residence would have generating trips year round. Let's just talk briefly about the approval criteria. We think we meet all the standards, we comply with conditional use standards, we believe the use is in the public interest, largely because this takes a lot of boats off of the road. Currently, these boats are being stored up north of Hayden, which is over 20 miles away, and so all of these boats will no longer get out on Highway 95 and drive through all of the lights in Coeur d'Alene and Hayden to get up there north of Lancaster where these boats spend their winter. And so we believe that significantly reduces the trips to town, and that is in the public interest. It allows a low-impact use, we believe this is a low-impact use, it is clean, it is quiet on property that we don't think is well-suited for other uses. The landfill, they run it very well, but it occasionally stinks. You know, Fighting Creek Materials or Peak Materials there, they run a gravel pit and it makes noise. The highway itself can be noisy, is often noisy at times. So we don't think these are great residential sites, and we think this is a low-impact use. We believe it's compatible with the adjacent uses, especially considering that the, what the majority of the adjacent uses are, non-residential. The agencies did not express any concerns, we believe it's generally supported by the country designation of the comp plan, this is a locally beneficial commercial use, and so we believe the comp plan supports that. Vlad alluded to some comments about the conditions of approval. We might, David or Vlad, Vlad's seen this, I know.
Read into the record as HE 1001. Read into the record as HE 1001.
So we would like to tweak the condition of approval regarding landscaping. Primarily, we think it should look like this, and we should have a landscape buffer along the, kind of the northwest side, along the northeast side, and maintain that buffer along what would be an extension of Boland Street. The reason for that is if we chase the landscape buffer down by the Highway 95 frontage, that lowers it by eight to 10 feet, and it makes it that much less effective. If we hold it up by the fence, those trees will hide that use much more effectively. As we said, we're going to slide this thing over a little bit so we can put the landscape buffer along the northeast property line there, maintain the south property line. We don't think it's really necessary to have it along the west property line with KEC going to have a substation there in the foreseeable future. There's also some existing vegetation, some existing trees that already exist along this part of the property line. The grade kind of helps us as well as we drop down the hill here, and so we just don't think that this side is as visible. And, you know, the highway is really dominated by non-residential uses anyway, and so we'd prefer not to have to have that landscape buffer on that side. Our proposed language also recognizes that we will not have water on the site, and so the landscaping where you might normally require an automated irrigation system, we won't be able to provide that here. So we'll be providing, we'll be using as many onsite trees as possible and planting where necessary, but they will be trees that can make a go of it, not typically your typical ornamental trees. There, you know, there'll be ponderosa pine and lodgepole pine and stuff like that that can make a go of it on their own in those conditions. So that's that condition. The second condition is this condition 809, and the initial condition said we couldn't get a, any permits until the road was, Boland Street was complete and that site disturbance permit had been filed. Well, finaling a site disturbance permit also requires grass to be established, and sometimes that happens just like it's supposed to, and sometimes it doesn't. And we don't want to be held up with our permits waiting for grass to grow. It's really that simple. It's our understanding from talking to the engineer for that project that that road is largely done, that they've got some minor tune-up stuff to do here in the spring, and then it's waiting for grass to grow. And so we feel that if we are able to tie the completion of that permit to certificates of occupancy for our buildings, that gives time for the grass to grow, it lets us get started on the permits, you know, while we're, while we're waiting for grass. And so that is, that's our request there, is to just tweak those two conditions, and with that, we don't have any concerns for any of the other conditions, and we think those are minor adjustments. So in closing, we think the proposed use is appropriate for the site, it meets the county's requirements, and we would respectfully request that you give us a recommendation for approval, and I'll answer any questions if you have them.
So is Boland Street complete to where it currently is?
It is, yes. It's, according to the engineer, it's, it's been constructed, it's, it's at the width it's going to be, it's in the alignment that it's supposed to be.
And that's its current termination point is going to be?
It terminates, it terminates at the, at our corner. There is a 20-foot emergency egress easement that runs along our south property line there, and so that's what you're seeing in our site plan, you can see it here. That's an emergency egress easement that was, I think, included with the original plat, which was done, I think it was done as an Idaho code plat. But I'm not aware of, it, you know, it terminates at our south property boundary. I think any owner to the south would have a hard time, it would require additional dedication of property owners for them to use it, and, and it would probably require the blessing of the other property owners that, you know, that it goes through in order to, for that to be extended or used for any other properties outside of the project. That's usually pretty tough to pull off, having had some experience with that. And so I don't think it'll be extended to any future use. It's shown there in case something came along and could connect it, I suppose, at some future point in time.
Okay. Not being a boat person, all these boats, the potentially 160 boats, all have slips, then?
Yes. These, these are, the, this facility is intended for the marina customers down there at, you know, what we all call shooters, and it's, you know, it's Black Rock Marina now, and yep, there are, and they've actually got a proposal into, for some additional slips down there, as I understand. So yes, they do have, there is that number of slips.
So if somebody had their boat put in in the spring, and then they realized, oh my gosh, we're not going to be able to use it anymore, haul it out, there might be some action between?
Yes, yeah. Do not, do not mistake anything that I've said to say that there will not be boats coming and going to a far lesser degree throughout the summer. You know, that may occur. It may even occur in the wintertime if somebody has a boat that's in there and it needs to go somewhere for repair or something like that, that it gets pulled out and driven off to, you know, a repair shop or something like that. So boats will occasionally, rarely, but occasionally, you know, come out at other times of the year. The vast majority get put in, in the spring and the fall, and unfortunately, you know, to maximize the use of these, these buildings, you know, you stack them in there, and once it's in there, it's not readily accessible. It's not like a mini storage where you've got your own, you know, you might have to move 10 boats in order to get to the one that you're after, and that's not very convenient, and so it doesn't, it doesn't lend itself to a boat owner going and picking it up. That's why they're all, they all come and go with marina staff, because we don't want the public smashing their boats into other people's boats, but also because it's, it's just not convenient to access. Once they're in there, they're put to bed for the winter typically.
And what happens if somebody's trailer tires go flat in the winter? How do you?
They, they, then it's on Black Rock Marina staff to either change out the tire or air it up or whatever is necessary to, you know, to get that. They'll have that, they'll have that problem occasionally, and, and they'll be prepared for it.
And all the bugs and cobwebs and stuff that get on these boats over the winter, they get washed off down at the marina?
That's right. There's no, no water at this, and so they will not have any maintenance at this location, so that all gets taken care of. They all get winterized, you know, boats have to be, most boats have to be drained for the winter to drain the water out of the engine block and stuff like that so that they don't, so it doesn't break the engine over the course of the winter with the freeze thaw. And so that all occurs down at their facility down there by, down by the docks.
Is fuel emptied out, too?
Generally not. Generally, generally, they are stored full or, or not, or with some partial amount in the tank, you know, generally the, the fuel tank is not emptied over the wintertime.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. John Magnussen, applicant, may wish to speak.
Thank you, Madam Hearing Examiner. My name's John Magnussen, jail box 2350, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. I am, along with two other gentlemen, constitute the applicant. I don't have a lot to add to what Mr. Wickman said, but I would like to follow up on why this place as opposed to some other place. The marina is just over two miles away from this location. We currently have approximately 124 slips that are fully rented, have been fully rented since North Idaho changed a few years ago, remain fully rented, and part of our full service to our customer base is to provide storage for their boats. As Mr. Wickman indicated, we do not have, due to the constraints of the site and the facility where we're at, and of course, things have changed in North Idaho, there may have been circumstances in the old days where the family would go put their boat in themselves and take the trailer away, because we do have a public boat launch at the marina. But now people, as part of the full-service package, do not want to deal with that, so we have to store, we provide a storage for their boats. And as Mr. Wickman indicated, to the extent that we can't store them on-site, which is like most of them, they get put on the trailer, put to bed, necessary cover on them, and they're taken down Rockford Bay Road to the highway and north of Hayden into storage facilities owned by other individuals that we make an arrangement with. So the reason why it's a little over two miles to where we're at, it's also next to a substation that will, a future substation, which is in large part why we picked that particular place, and even, you know, we knew we needed a conditional use permit, and we also knew that the substation was adjacent to interstate or to Highway 95 with a highway approach. Kootenay Electric was agreeable to giving us an easement to access that way, but the transportation department, because of the presence of Boland Road, would not agree to give us an access from that site. We did not, you know, view the property that we purchased as, as that lot being a prime residential lot, given, you know, its view shed, this lot, I'm not talking about the other lots, but this lot, it's down at the southwest corner. I don't think a large amount of people want to build a house next to a substation and look at the dump. So, you know, that's why we picked where we were at, and it's in close proximity, and we felt it was compatible and provided, provided a service with minimal intrusion. I, just a couple of questions you had asked about how it's actually used. The boats are trailered at the marina, the boats are winterized, and in most part covered up, some people like their boat covered in plastic, and the boat is then brought by staff to the stor, would be brought by the staff to the storage and, and left there until it's taken out. This isn't, other than the anomaly of somebody, somebody deciding they didn't want to rent their slip and they sold their boat and they might have to come out, that's such an anomaly. Most of these people would, we, we, the dam stabilizes usually, you know, sometime in late June, but we're able to fill the marina up with everybody's boat, usually, usually by mid to late May, barring a 100-year flood event or something of that nature. And then everybody, as our customer base, generally goes home on Labor Day, and then on September, we put them all to bed and take them out. And so this facility, other than a random anomaly, which would not be a member of the public, but marina staff, would only be accessed really in those two windows, which, you know, probably a couple of weeks apiece, maybe, maybe three weeks. We have a little more latitude in the fall when we take them out, because people aren't all rushing to get on the water and say, where's my boat? So it might be, might be a few weeks in the fall, but it's more concentrated in the spring, so I hope that helps out.
Thank you. Drew Dittman, applicant, wishes to speak.
Good evening, Madam Hearing Examiner. I'm Drew Dittman, Lake City Engineering. For the record, I am the engineer on the project working with Mr. Wickman. I really don't have anything more to add, I'm just kind of here for technical support if there's any kind of technical questions I can answer, otherwise I will reserve any comments for rebuttal.
I don't have any right now. Thank you. Shatana Poll, in favor, does not wish to speak. Frank Perry, opposed, wishes to speak.
Good morning, good evening, Hearing Examiner. I'm Frank Perry, I'm one of the owners of Lot 8, which is 15516 Boland. I'm directly across from where this proposed facility will be. I wasn't notified until I actually contacted Vlad. Apparently, the notification went to the seller and not to me, that's one thing. But all through this, it's been kind of confusing, and it's almost been a little deceptive as far as what is actually going to go on here. If you look at what the plan is, they're showing a enclosure that has 16 boats, but I've seen documents that show as many as 40 boats. So now they're saying there's 160, so is it going to be 160, is it going to be 200, is it going to be more than that? That's a definite concern. The fact that now they're saying there'll be no water, now you have 160 boats during, in an area that potentially you could have a fire issue, and no way to fight a fire. This facility's supposed to comply with NFPA 303. I'm not sure of all the, the conditions of that, but I'm not sure if fire sprinklers are required or a hydrant or storage of water, and what the conditions of that would be. It's good to see that they're going to leave the hundreds of trees as a buffer that are in front there. That's definitely a concern, they're talking about putting a, a buffer in, but no better buffer than what's there. The other thing is, the applicant, everything that they've mentioned about the site has nothing to do with residences. There's 11 lots for sale in Rockford Heights, six of those currently sold are single-family residences. My lot, or my wife and I's lot, is directly across Boland Street. The drawings for that house are currently in plan check, so the plan is to get that started as soon as we get our permit. That will be about 300 feet from the front entrance of this facility. That will be about 300 feet from the front entrance of this facility. The, in looking at the staff analysis that was done on this, there's mention of the concern of blight in putting this facility in. I'm not sure why you'd want to consider putting a facility in that is going to be an issue with blight. And it doesn't make sense. They mentioned all of the commercial facilities in the area. What they failed to mention is every one of those commercial facilities has direct access to Highway 95. None of that traffic comes onto Boland. So there's a huge concern from us as far as how's the maintenance agreement going to go. Residential members, we're there all the time. We understand that we're going to be able to work that out. Working with a large corporation, their frontage on Boland Street is about 50 feet out of 2,700. So if they just want to go, well, I'm going to be responsible for 50 feet, yet they're going to do the majority of the damage for the 2,700 or 2,650 feet more. Obviously, I think we're in, not in agreement as far as the number of trips per year. I don't know where nine comes from, but I would figure you'd maybe get four trips a day maximum out of, out of a residence, which with 11 properties there, you might get 40 trips a day. If you figure four, two, two people, two trips a day is my thinking anyways. So I think the estimates are off a bit. Again, they, they continually state that this is low impact, yet they don't mention what the impact is to the road and, and who, how are we going to, how are we going to The facility should still comply with all commercial codes, even though we're, you know, we're getting through in a rural setting. And like they're mentioning, the landscape screening, there's no way to water it. So if it dies, what happens to the landscape screening? Is that just out the window or is there a requirement that that must be maintained? If you look at the county comprehensive plan in Objective B, the rural community, commercial development in a rural community should serve local residents and harmonize with the community. I'm not sure what kind of harmony a storage facility has with residences. They've never mentioned how this is going to be doing great things for the, for the residences in the area.
That squeal was time up.
Oh, that was five minutes. That was quick. I'm out of time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Corey Cook.
No. I'll, I'll repeat it so you're good.
Thank you.
Corey Kalilis, I am Lot Two, one, five, two, one, eight, South Boland. We are the, two of the, or one of the first two properties that were purchased in Rockford Heights neighborhood. First off, I, I will start that this property was sold to us from the sellers as a residential neighborhood to where we planned to bring our family to and live there and play on the properties and, and retire. Or, and when we, our kids get old enough, maybe sell, which kind of brings in a, our, we're looking out for our family's health and our finances. By bringing in this property, I feel that, for one, the properties are going to diminish in value. You know, who wants 50-foot boats being pulled next to their house or even whatever size up and down, especially a gravel road? There is no mention to a paving of the road. We, we live northeast of all of, most of, most of Boland Avenue, except for the part that goes through our property. The winds typically blow from the southwest, which means we're going to have a dust, dustball over our property most of the time, which my children do have allergies and asthma issues, which I don't like. There are multiple homeowners, as Frank had mentioned. We're just one of them. Lot One is planning on building. He's had stuff in the works. Lot Three, Four, and Five, Four is here with us today, are also in the planning part. So in all the processes that were written down online on all these applicants say, no one's there. There's no one within any distance of this property. And while we live there, yeah, it might look like a trailer park right now because we live in our RVs, but we're building our house. My parents live with us in their barn dominium. They're going to be living in there. And all of us are moving into what was sold to us as that. Now, I will step back. My property, when sold to me, was the first of two. Both of ours were listed with CCNRs listed in the listing agreement. Those CCNRs, I do have a copy of. They were never finalized by the seller, which, we have it in full email chain that we have CCNRs for this property and as stated by our realtor, which, sorry, doesn't have much to do with them except for this part here, it says, "They also protect against anyone having to live next to an RV storage lot yet, and yet agricultural activities are prohibited." That is from the original listing agent of this property. I didn't notice that the CCNRs were not included in the, in the closing documents, which I do have conversation with my attorney on regarding what happens with our unfulfilled contract by the original seller, which is the seller that sold them their land to. So I'm going to step that, that, and put that part in. There were original CCNRs that were supposed to be allotted to this property, which prohibited storage facilities. When all of our neighbors met, we, I told them, hey, we have CCNRs. We have CCNRs. And it was until about a year and a half in that I learned that we, that they were not recorded. So we do have conversations with attorneys regarding the seller and the agent about why our CCNRs were never included. That would have stopped this process from day one. We, the access to this property, that, the said property, it actually comes up, the easement, which is split on my property and Lot One, which will be, it's on my property. Obviously, they're easements, but it goes by my house, so I was not notified, even though it affects me mostly with the car traffic coming in and out. The applicant had mentioned that the landfill is across the street. Well, and that it's a sort of site, a site, a bad site. It's hard to look at. You know what? We look at gorgeous bald eagles that feed off from it, the coyotes that ran across the field today, the eagle, the, the elk that, that ventured up there to get a snack too. They're covering it up, and in about probably less than 10 years, we'll have a beautiful hillside that we stare at, not a metal roof. Once this, if this ever got approved, what's to stop more future development by commercial uses? Let's say they don't buy Lot Ten and want to develop it. Their plan actually shows their design up against Lot Ten, so is the, is the plan, when you look at the application, it says for lots nine and 10. So is there future development plans for Lot Ten that we don't know about? Vehicle trips. Frank had mentioned nine per day. We live 20 minutes from town. We don't make nine trips per day. We would not be able to afford to live in Coeur d'Alene. We drive our kids to school, and that's two trips per day. If we got to go to Costco, we go during that time, and we drive, we consider a lot. So I think the trips per day, we're not, we don't live in town. We don't just jump and go to the restaurant. We, we plan our trips. Sorry, I had a few notes written down on here. They, they mentioned we're in a commercial zoning area of all these other businesses, and as Frank mentioned, all those businesses do touch Highway 95. This does not. They're, they're asking to get commercial use to drive through a neighborhood of kids and children next to the bus stop. These are people that are pulling, sometimes I parked down at the marina before. Some of these boats are upwards of, am I wrong? I can't talk that way. Forty foot long with trailers and vehicles that make corners. Our, the safety of our children is one thing we're asking too. If they had access off 95, maybe we might not have, be having this conversation, but stepping back to my original comment, this property is a residential subdivision, zoned rural, zone, it's residential, it's sold to us as residential. Even the current realtor is selling stuff as residential lots. So besides their one lot, there will be 10 properties. Lot One lives on, I talked to him, he's not here today, so it's hearsay of course, but he lives on, up against the highway, and he's planning on building a house on the highway. There's people who live next to freeways all the time, all through Coeur d'Alene. Yeah, maybe someone might not find that they would want to live next to a highway, but they're all, always are. One of my big questions is, Black Rock owns lots of properties. There's many for sale. Why our neighborhood and why not next to the $3 million homes that you're trying to build, that they're trying to build, sorry, and not next to our house that we bought in a neighborhood for our family? There's, I'm sure other properties that are nearby, but this one is one that affects us. I know people say, not in my backyard, but my kid's safety comes into play. And when I have to look at my wife every day when she asks, what the hell's happening? Sorry, what's happening with all this? I have to explain to her, or she knows, she's a smart enough woman. But our kid's safety comes first. Thank you.
Thank you. Attila Akag, Akady?
Close enough a few more. You're up for two unnamed.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. My name is Attila Cloddy. I own Lot Four, which is off of, just off of Boland, which is Grisham, which has not been recorded yet, but I am directly below Corey and Lowry's property. As a crow flies, probably about 700, 800 feet roughly from the proposed site of the applicant. I as well disagree and have questions and concerns regarding this project. Number one, you know, I know Corey and Frank both talked about the, the personal aspects of it, and I concur a lot of that. When we bought this property, we bought it in specific reason to raise our family, to grow with our family and as a residential property. That's how it was sold to us, as many of the other lots are currently being sold as. There was no mention of this ever being zoned like commercial or commercial for any, any reason whatsoever. And I don't feel that, you know, as there was mentioned, the continuity of the community that this plays into factor within that. I know the applicants mentioned that there is other zoned commercial areas, but if you look on an aerial map, there is no residential areas directly from that. And as mentioned before, there's direct access off the 95, not off of a residential dirt road that was just installed. Additionally, I agree, I, I don't agree with the 9.5 trips. I don't know any family. I'd be hard pressed that if the applicant himself makes 9.5 trips a day from his own residence, so I'm not sure where they're getting those numbers from. And then also to say that it's only two trips per boat drop, I, I have, I have a very high level of thought that there's going to be more than, more than two trips per, per day per boat. There's going to be alternate other trips to check on security, and that's going to bring additional traffic onto the property. As was mentioned, there is no water on the property. There's no drainage, there's no septic, there's no sewer, which begs the question of stormwater and the chemicals leaching off of the boats and onto the, the seasonal stream that is there. You know, I, I haven't seen any environmental impact reports that were written. I haven't seen anything for stormwater, what the stormwater management plan is or what kind of remediation plan they have in place for any of the chemicals that leach off of the boats. As the applicant stated, these boats will not be drained from fuel or any water, so all those chemicals throughout the process will be displaced from the boats and potentially leaking into our groundwater. All the properties are on wells, so that is a huge concern. Additionally, there is, I don't want to call it a wildlife habitat, but there's anywhere from 20 to 40 eagle, bald eagles that nest on the southern property line that have nested all season long. They're there right now. They usually show up around December, January, and they're there all the way through May, which is the proposed time that they're planning on moving these boats in and out of. Additionally, all that seepage that could come into the, the seasonal creeks, the bald eagles are there, and a lot of the trees that they're talking about displacing are part of the natural habitat for the bald eagles. Bald eagles don't just frequent and visit existing nests, but they also have perches and feeding, feeding trees. And those trees in question on that property that they're talking about displacing and removing are part of that habitat. So that is an additional concern. Also, with the fact that, I haven't seen an EIR, are there alternative sites that were proposed? As Corey mentioned, there's a ton of property on Black Rock. On Lufbe Road, there's a huge water detention basin. There is a large utility facility over there with a bunch of open land. Why isn't that proposed for the boat storage that's even closer than our property? That is Black Rock-owned property, not private residential area where people are trying to raise their families. So that is an additional concern. Also, you know, I don't know if, if I appreciate the condescending comments about it's not an ideal residential place, place for residents to buy and build homes. Obviously, you know, many of us have decided to do that. And the, the applicant also mentioned that, that when they purchased this property, Southern California Edison was going to allow them to have an easement, and now they're not because of Department of Transportation. That seems like their problem, which is now being pushed and forced onto us and is further putting the risk of our family and our children at it, plus potentially reducing our property values.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Jeff Scott, opposed, does not wish to speak. Bobby Perry, opposed, does not wish to speak. Lori Kalau, Kalilis, opposed, may wish to speak.
Hi, I'm the other half here, who, we moved over here.
Full, full name and address please.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Lori Kalilis, and we're 15, two, one, eight, South Boland. We are the only ones with the actual building and living on the stinky residence right now that has been pointed out across from the garbage dump. Yes, there is a dump. Yes, we all knew that when we moved there, but the dump will be covered over at some point, and I don't have to worry about that affecting my kids as they go to catch the school bus. Once there is more kids in the neighborhood, our kids will be riding the school bus to and from school, which means there will be little kids running off a bus at the same time that these boats are supposed to be pulled up and down our entire road. We moved here to live in a rural neighborhood. That was what was sold to us, was this was going to be a neighborhood, so our kids would have property to play on, but also have children and other families that will be living next to us. We didn't purchase property next to a strip mall or next to a storage unit or anywhere else that we didn't feel that we would have this issue. We thought we were out, out of the town, out of all of that. And our little road, Boland Street, is a gravel neighborhood street. It's a gravel, it's a private driveway, is what it's called. It is not a big road for all this traffic to come through. I have a four-year-old, a very rambunctious four-year-old. That little boy has no sidewalk. He has nowhere to go if there is someone who is not looking down when they pull in with a big truck and a big boat. That is my concern, and that is a very big concern with access from a neighborhood to a storage unit that now can have maybe 160 boats. What about future? What about future growth for Black Rock? What about, they're asking for more slips down at Shooter's that was just mentioned. How many more boats is that going to be? How much more is that going to affect our neighborhood? That is a neighborhood. This whole time, they've been talking about commercial. They failed to mention that when this property was sold to them, it was sold to them in Rockford Heights neighborhood community. Yeah, this plot was set up by these sellers back in like 85, but it never went away. They just never put it up for sale. It's been there, established with all of these parcels as rural residential. It had a name, it had streets, it had parcels for single-family homes. It did not have anything to do with commercial property. We purchased this under the impression that we had CCNRs. That's our own real estate issue. I understand that. We didn't realize- We didn't realize those were never filed somehow. And then, we bought in January of 2021, they bought in October of 2021. In August, we found out that this was something that was in the works from the person putting in the road, not from anybody else. Ela Construction was the one that said, "They're looking at putting a boat storage in here." And we were like, "How? This is a neighborhood. How would that even be a possibility?" I don't understand why we're even here doing this, why we're even discussing this when this is a neighborhood. You live in a neighborhood. Everybody lives in a neighborhood. You don't think that you're gonna have 160 boats pulled through your neighborhood off and on throughout the entire year? There's a very big concern for safety. The wildlife, the eagles feed out of that creek. My kids go and watch the, the eagles feed out of that creek. You'd have kids running around this neighborhood. There's no mention of safety for them. That's why I'm here for this, is for safety for the kids that will be living in this neighborhood, not for a multi-billionaire-dollar corporation who wants to put some boats in a neighborhood and make it seem like it's no big deal.
Thank you. You're very welcome. Jennifer Gilbert, opposed, does not wish to speak. Anyone on Zoom?
No, Madam Chair, no one that I see other than staff. So no.
Okay. Then we have time now for applicant rebuttal.
Well, thank you, Madam Hearing Examiner. I appreciate the opportunity. I think I probably ought to go home because I've just been called a multi-billionaire. I don't know what the heck I'm dealing with storing boats for if I'm a multi-billionaire, but we've got a lot of misconception and a lot of misinformation to clear up. Black Rock Marina is not the golf club at Black Rock. There is no ownership of Black Rock Marina in the golf club. Whatever they do at the golf club, it's whatever they do at the golf club. It's not me, unless I was a multi-billionaire, in which, of course, I've already disavowed that of any concept, but I digress. This isn't, and again, no one is denigrating, and if anybody took a denigration, it was not intended of anybody's 10-acre residential site in this, in this area. But let's be clear, we do denigrate our lot. I mean, there it is. That's our lot. Our lot's next to the Future Transformer site, which will be built regardless of whether there are eagles, which if eagles were the touchstone of where we could build in North Idaho, we wouldn't need a planning department because they're everywhere. But we picked that lot for a reason. And, and it's interesting, I've heard comments about CCNRs, and somebody may have been told something, I have no idea. The simple fact is, when you buy your property, there either are CCNRs or there aren't. They're recorded. You either looked or you didn't look. I'm sorry you didn't look and you didn't see that there weren't CCNRs. I had nothing to do with it. We had nothing to do with it. That's another issue. There aren't CCNRs. Because when we bought the property, we equally looked to make sure there weren't CCNRs that had any prohibition against our proposed use. And in fact, I've got a couple of exhibits that I would like to make part of the record. And I do not know who I tender those to, may I?
Yes, please.
Exhibits called into the record, HE 1003.
Did we have 1002?
Um, 1002 is the PowerPoint presentation, so.
This is, actually, I've got HE 1004 too, because I've got two separate.
Okay. Called into the record is HE 1004.
I'm holding up the one named addendum, which I don't know the number, 1002.
It's okay.
When we purchased this property, there were 11 lots that the owner owned, and as noted, he had sold Lots One and Two. Lots One and Two are the ones, if I'm not mistaken, I know Lot One fronts on Rockford Bay Road, but those were the only two that were sold. There were nine lots remaining, and as a condition of our purchase from Mr. Crowe, we stated that Mr. Crowe, this is number four, as the owner of Parcels Three through 11, for himself and for his successors and assigns, agrees to consent to any special use permit application submitted by the owner of, purchaser of Parcel Nine with Cootney County for the next two years to the extent that we're seeking a special use permit for boat storage. So we came to this area, we picked a 10-acre lot on Highway 95 next to a substation that has access on Bolin Road, just the same for our lot as for anybody else's lot. We proposed a use that is less intensive in terms of traffic and to dispel that, we didn't come up with the 9.5 a day. That's the standard that's imposed on us. That is the standard that the county agencies use for measuring what impact we will have. That's not us just making something up. It may be less than 9.5, maybe more than 9.5, not for us, but that's the standard they come up with. So we come in with a standard, with a number of traffic, and, and despite, you know, people get emotional and people have heartfelt beliefs, and I do not denigrate that. But we're not having a veritable parade of boat trailers every day of the year. We're having an isolated two-time-a-year deal. And, and I would respectfully submit, and again, I don't wanna denigrate any, anyone's personal held beliefs, but, you know, a truck driving a boat trailer with a 24 or 30-foot or 21-foot boat on it is, is no different in terms of driving down the road than somebody else who lives there that has a big truck. I mean, it's not just, if, if they're concerned about kids in the road, these are 10-acre lots. This isn't a subdivision in the middle of Post Falls. They're 10-acre lots, and that would presuppose that only the vehicles we bring in, in two phases a year are the only ones that can cause a problem. And that's simply, that's simply not true. But back to this, this, we asked before, and we, and we got the purchaser. Now, I, you know, what he told people, I don't know, but I, you'd look at our genuine good faith due diligence, it was suggested in one that we'd been deceptive and a lack of, it was kind of confusing and deceptive. I was called deceptive. It's not deceptive. I walked in the front door, I said, "Tell everybody you got out here that this is what we're doing, and waive your objection." The second document I gave to you is simply so you know how that got to us. We had a representative of the company sign the addendum, that was Hollis Houston, and then Hollis Houston assigned the agreement to us. So just so you know why it's got Hollis Houston on there. So it was closed within about a week of the agreement by the seller, that he would apprise everyone who came to the neighborhood that that was what was going on. And of course, you know, phones are two-way street. I, I mean, I didn't call these folks. They could've called me, I could've called them. You know, you wanna find out about what's going on, nobody has anything that's not on the level. Miscellaneous points suggested that because we don't have wire, water, we're a fire hazard, we've complied with the Fire District's requirements. We are below the threshold of improvements that are required by the Worley Fire, Fire District for watering, and that they've simply agreed, offered no opposition. Road maintenance, again, I reiterate, we're one of 11 owners who will use the road less intensively than anybody else, but we will honor our commitment to be 1/11th of whatever agreement comes to be. That's 1/11th, but we shouldn't be treated any different than anybody else because we're less intensive than them. Landscaping, and there's a claim that landscaping isn't gonna be possible because there's no water. I see a heck of a lot of trees there right now that are native and indigenous and don't have water other than what nature brings them. So that's the same thing that's gonna be there in the future. Landscaping isn't a problem. Lastly, it's, it's, it's Cootney Electric, not Southern California Edison. A reference to the power company down there.
Right.
Thank you. Unless you have questions.
Just give me a minute. So you own Lot 10 as well?
Oh, that's a good point. No, we don't own Lot 10. The description on Lot Nine, Lot Nine was, Lot Nine was originally configured by the developer. Lot 10 was originally configured. They did a boundary line adjustment at some point, so when you actually look at that legal description, I think it's like Lot Nine and a portion of Lot 10. So it's not, it's, it's, this is the only lot we have. This is the only lot we have proposed. This is the only standing we have. But we have a portion of Lot Nine and 10 because of a subsequent boundary line adjustment.
I would just, there's, this line used to be straight. They did a boundary line adjustment, and so that we've got a portion of either Lot Nine or 10, we've got a portion of that adjacent lot included in our legal description. It is only one, it is only one, one lot, so.
Okay.
So that engendered some confusion that we own Lots Nine and 10, and we don't. And we're only asking for our lot, which has a portion of former Lot 10.
Okay. Vlad, do you have a clarification?
I'd like to clarify in general how Lot descriptions are referenced in the Assessor's Office.
You got your microphone on?
Yes. So I just wanted to clarify for the record how the Assessor's Office describes parcels that are, that have been platted and have been subsequently boundary line adjusted. Typically, when their boundary line adjustment, adjusted, the two adjusted parcels retain some portion of the legal description of the adjoining parcel where they gained acreage. The only way that the overall underlying legal description was, would change if those parcels were re-subdivided through a new plat process where a new plat name was reassigned. And so in this case, it's, the boundary line adjustment is basically describing portions of the originally platted parcels, Nine and 10, as Mr. Wickman and Mr. Magnusson had explained. So it's not two separate parcels, it's two adjoining parcels that share portions of the original configuration.
Okay. Thanks. With regard to the number of boats that can be stored, I think you guys thought maximum of 160 would be all between those that you would store outside and those that would be in the three buildings, yes?
The, the number of the boats is dictated by the size of the structure inside. So, I mean, this isn't, this isn't some rouge to say we're gonna bring in 500 boats. The fact is, the structures are just under 12,000 square feet. You can only fit so many boats. If, if we put 35-foot boats on, we don't have the 50-foot yachts, okay? 35 is a pretty big boat for our Marina. But if you got a, if you got a 24, you can fit more in. If you got 35, you can fit less. And then you can fit whatever you can fit between the buildings without violating that. So, you know, when we come up with 160, that's probably using a average, average like a 24 or 26, and so you can get that many in there. But it's, it's solely a function of the size. I don't know if, if we did have 50-foot boats, we couldn't put, then we'd have a very few boats, but, but that's the answer to that.
Do you wanna speak to stormwater management?
I leave the technicalities to Mr. Wickman or Mr. Ditman. I'm just kinda like.
Big picture.
I'm just kinda like the guy here. So unless you got anything else.
I don't think for you, no. Thanks.
Madam Hearing Examiner, Drew Ditman, Lake City, adjourned again for the record. So we will be required, if, if this is approved, to go through a site disturbance process with the county. Part of that process is we'll have to generate a stormwater management plan that will be reviewed by county staff and approved by county staff. So if we get through this step, we will develop this stormwater plan that will be reviewed by the county and approved by the county, obviously in accordance with the rules and requirements of Cootney County.
Vlad, do you wanna maybe give a clarification with regard to the question about EIRs?
I can do that.
Okay.
Madam Hearing Examiner, I'm David Callahan, Cootney County Community Development Director. In our county and our state, we only do environmental impact studies when federal money is involved. The state of Idaho has not allowed local governments to, and no local government that I know of can actually do an environmental impact study. Again, unless it's using federal money and then it's federally required. So we don't do them locally, and we can't.
Thank you. Anything else, Rand, that you wanna add?
There were a couple other very minor points. I will touch on them very briefly, and perhaps it's only one or two. There was one concern about dust, for example, oh, I'm sorry, Rand Wickman again for the record, concern about dust. Again, the time of year when these boats are brought into and taken out of, they're typically in the fall after we start getting rains again and dust has, dust is reduced. And certainly in May is not the time of the year when dust is a problem. And so I would expect that, you know, the road will be dust-oiled if it's, if dust is a problem during the summer, that they will have some dust mitigation put on it, but it won't be due to our traffic. It'll be, you know, because it's necessary for others. Again, this use will participate their fair share in that part of the maintenance. Talked about that, talked about boat size. I think that, that really does it. Unless you have any additional questions for me, we will call it a night.
I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Time for public input is completed. So this draws to a conclusion, our hearing this evening on case number CUP 22-0013. Thank you.